We ask if you could please stand, join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Chair is looking for a motion to approve the agenda. Second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Abstentions, I'm sorry. Chair is looking for a motion to approve the Planning Commission meeting minutes from our December 12, 2018 meeting.
So moved.
Second. We have a motion and a seconding discussion on the motion. Hearing none, we'll call a question. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
Same.
Motion carries. Next item is a conditional use permit amendment and variance application for Lakes International Language Academy at 121 11th Avenue Southeast. This will be a public hearing. We'll consider the CUP amendment and the variance application. The way this will work this evening is that the city will present the application as they understand it. Commissioners will then ask any clarification questions. We will then ask the applicant if they would like to say a few words. After that, we will open it up for the public hearing. I'll give some further instructions there. After the public hearing, it'll come back to the commissioners to make a decision. So Donovan, I believe you're presenting?
Yes, sir.
All yours.
Can you get some video, please? This is the sixth CUP amendment for the Lila School Language, Lakes International Language Academy. What they seek to do with this CUP amendment is to build a one-story, little over 11,000 square foot addition to what's considered the annex building on the north side of 11th Avenue Southwest.
Do we have video?
Working.
Well, this CUP amendment proposes a net increase of four classrooms to bring the total to 49 classrooms for both this annex building.
Take your time, Donovan. We're not much of a vaudeville act up here, though, so.
We'll get video. Let me just continue with the description. So this would bring a total of 49 classrooms in the two buildings, served by staff of 75, with a capacity for 975 students. This is an increase of 50. And the purpose of this is to allow for, to expand their pre-K program there at the school. The variance requested is to expand the building, existing building westward at the same setback from the street. And so the request is to locate the building 17 feet from the front lot line, which is basically 13 feet from the curb of 11th Avenue Southeast. The existing structure, no? The existing structure is about 13,000 square feet, and this would total, make the building The submitted, there's a circulation plan that the applicant submitted, and it shows the traffic coming from First Street Southeast and exiting on Second Street Southeast through a parking lot that's proposed to be 38 parking spaces. Part of the, my examination of the site plan, you know, after the pack had gone out, revealed that actually the parking lot does not have, on both the Second and First Street fringes, does not have the required 10 feet setback. So that, I'm making that in addition to the staff recommendation, is to, that the parking lot adhere to the required setback, which would, by my estimate, allow, require the removal of two parking spots. But the required parking is actually 21 spaces for the seven classrooms within the building. And at that, if it was only two removed, it would take it to a total of 34 spaces, well above the required number of parking spaces. There's a trash enclosure that's been proposed, that it's the, the details and the location meets code. The lighting plan came afterwards, it's, you have in front of you, and it also meets code requirements for the lack of light spillover, you know, over the, you know, over the property lines. Also, the landscaping plan is before you, and that also meets the basic code requirements. Are we?
It's not working, it's not going to work.
Can we?
None of them are sending to the computer.
Okay, well, oh, so, I apologize. AV, that will work for cable, but we can't actually redirect.
Because I do have copies of some of, I didn't bring all of the drawings, but I did bring site plan drawings, so I could at least, but that's, but if it doesn't show up in here.
Is this a problem that's solvable tonight, or we are without video for the night?
I don't know how to solve it, no.
How about the guy in the room, the woman in the room back there?
I've never worked with this. So what we can do is basically, we could, we can make things, you know, provide the record for the cable viewers, and so perhaps the applicant can review some of these as part of their, you know, their presentation. That doesn't help a lot of, you know, for us at this moment.
Well, we have them on our laptop, but we just can't get them on the big screen.
Correct. Do we have exhibits, maybe hand out to some of the people that are here? Do we have some reduced copies that we can hand out?
I can hand out, I can do a quick print of the basic site plan. You know, do you think that would, would that be helpful?
Yes, yes, sir.
I've got one right here that's in the mail.
I'm sending three of them. Do you have all those copies? Is there, do you have?
Yeah. We just have copies of, 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 of.
Is it this?
That's a good one, yeah. Because it has a traffic plan. If you want to do it.
To take a recess, to the call of the chair, so stay tuned for a few minutes, and we'll figure out where we can get going, so. Just a few minutes and we'll be back.
Right of way of 11th Street, beyond what this school or what the subject, who owns the subject property. There's a public interest for the traveling public here to have that right of way in fee title. And it just seems to me that the city ought to be in a better position to acquire right of way than just allowing their private use of public right of way.
Right. If the strict reading of the state statute, which our city attorney adheres to, says that only an exaction like that can only occur when there's a subdivision of land. And so in this type of land use application, you know, the city, according to Bridget, the city attorney, you know, the city cannot exact, you know, cannot require that. I mean, we could accept it as a gift maybe or something, but to me, it's not going to improve the functioning of, you know, this project or even the road really. So I don't see it as necessary.
No, but if we're, we don't also have to approve a variance to allow more encroachment on a right of way that's encroaching closer than what should be too, though. I mean, that's the other way to look at it, is that we're allowing encroachment into property that is, should be public right of way.
Well, it's not, I mean, it's a building setback. They're not going into the right of way.
Yeah, well, the buildings, yeah. That's, I'm going to beat a dead horse here. That's all I have.
Other questions for Donovan?
Well, I did, yes, I have one more. Your staff report talked about four or more classrooms, and I think that was an error because the applicant has clearly said it's seven classrooms that are going to be added.
It's seven classrooms total within the annexed building.
And then there's one bonus room, which I'll ask the architect about that later because that has a higher ceiling, I believe, and we can ask that question later. But there's, parking requirements are kind of based upon the number of classrooms.
Correct.
The teachers and the bonus room, I guess I'm wondering what exactly is that and what are they using that for. I'm sorry, that's all I have.
Okay. Any other questions for the city? All right, now would the applicant like to speak?
Cam Headland, Executive Director, Hell Lakes International. We have met quite a few times since our last meeting to look at traffic flow. We think we have a plan that addresses the needs pretty well. We certainly will comply with all of Ryan's comments of needing two flaggers and other pieces that are associated. We're certainly fine with the five-foot easements along both 11th and First Avenue. We think that our plan with offsetting times and one-way, we propose one-way traffic through the property from First Avenue over to Second. And we propose buses and cars are going separate directions. Buses would come and go from 11th Avenue, and cars would come and go, come on First Avenue and leave on Second Avenue going to the north. We would ask the city to post no parking during school hours, or at least during traffic hours, on both sides of Second Avenue, at least the width of the school site and further if they think that's necessary, to relieve people parking in front of those neighbors' houses all the time. But Second Avenue would be the exit. It shouldn't have any stacking. There's only buses going toward 11th, so that corner really should not get too congested. And coming the other direction off of 11th would only be buses coming on First Avenue. We would ask the cars to come down from the north, south on First Avenue, to enter the property, with flaggers on both entrance and exit to get that dinged into people's heads. And so we think that that would really keep the traffic flowing rather quickly and rather smoothly through the project. To answer your question about seven classrooms, we would decommission some of the ones that are in the basement so that the classrooms would all be upper level with windows. And we would use the ones in the basement for small, you know, one-on-one study cafeteria, not additional classroom spaces that have extra teachers just moving the pieces around. The larger room is an activity room, so it would have students that are, you know, in the winter playing inside rather than outside, and some formal activity classes in there is what the one with the raised roof would be used for. With that, I'd like to turn it over to our architect, Dennis Batty.
I'm Dennis Batty, 22770 Imperial Avenue North, Forest Lake, Minnesota. I don't want to beat a dead horse here, but we did have a neighborhood meeting where we presented these plans and had a robust meeting with lots of discussion. And we have with our, we've spent a good deal of time here talking about, or talking amongst ourselves with the city and our civil engineers on what it would be realistic in terms of traffic flow here, what we're, and what realistic things we could do to alleviate that. In your package, you have a sheet, you should have a sheet A 1.1, the sheet that was handed out to the, to the audience here is that sheet as well. On that sheet, it's our regular site plan drawing, but we have superimposed a traffic pattern on there, which...
Page thirty-four to PDF.
And we've actually talked back and forth about several different potential variations of this within the site itself. But our overall plan that we want to put forth is that, that parents dropping off students at this building will be encouraged to come down First Avenue from the north and make a right-hand, I'm sorry, make a left-hand turn into the site. And then they'll drop off somewhere there in the area of the main entrance of the building, which is right at the elbow there. I don't know if you can see that on your drawing, but right at the, that little recess at the L there is where the main entrance is. And then they would then proceed through the site and then exit to the north on Second Street. Buses would come in, I've shown six buses, but there probably realistically will never be six buses on the site at any one time. But they would park on the right hand, or they would come in and park on the right-hand side of the street. And students would be dropped off and picked up. You can see that we've created a considerable area of new sidewalk there on the north and the north side of the addition and the west side of the existing building so that there will be a good, there's a good large area there for students to kind of mill around the way that they do, and getting on and getting off of the buses and waiting for parents. We do not show the actual location of flaggers, but there will be an absolute minimum of two. One would, the one that would be, is most crucial, will be the one that stands right at the north side of that new west entrance there on First Street, directing traffic, automobile traffic coming onto the site so that there isn't a conflict between automobile traffic and the bus traffic coming onto the site there. The buses, we don't know for sure which direction they will enter the site, but there will be, at a maximum, there will be six buses. Right now, there's only four. And then the buses will probably exit, Cam has met with the bus company, and they have talked about how this would work. And probably what most of the buses will do is exit the site and make a right-hand turn and come back to 11th Street and exit out of there. One of the other things that Cam mentioned, and I just want to underscore, is that we're, the school is going to officially, whatever you call it, request that the city put up no parking signs during, at least during the drop-off time in the morning and the pickup time in the afternoon, along, actually on both sides of Second Street there. What the, from listening to the comments of the neighbors who came to the neighborhood meeting, it is that particular stretch of the road there that seems to be the most problematic as far as traffic is concerned. So one of the things, I think you can see from our diagram and the way we're proposing traffic flow here, that we're trying to, you know, minimize the traffic. We feel like if no parking signs were put up there, it would minimize the traffic even more in that particular area right there. So that's the basic plan. I just want to make a couple of quick comments about the variance. You're right, this is, Mike, it is an unusual setup here where we've got street right-of-way, I mean, street, actual street paving on, on the, actually on the school property there. And we are aware of that. We have brought that, we brought that to the city's attention when we first had the survey done. And basically Donovan told us the same thing he told you here tonight, is that, that, you know, once, obviously, the paving has been there for many more than six years. So there is that, understood, what I, I don't remember the exact term that he used, but that there is an easement, a prescriptive, I guess that was the term, prescriptive easement. But the other thing that Ryan mentioned in his report was requesting of the school of a five-foot easement along both 11th Avenue and on First Street, First and Second Streets. And we've talked about that, and they're, well, the school should be the one to actually, will be the one who officially responds to Ryan Goodman about that. But they, we have no problem with there being a five-foot utility easement along 11th and as far up First and Second Street as it needs to go for them to accomplish what they want to accomplish. In regard to the variance itself, the, what we're doing, if you look at the site real closely there, you'll see that the building is not square with, or not parallel with 11th Street, the paving there. It actually is rotated clockwise, probably four or five degrees, so that you can see that our addition is, I think it's seventeen feet from the property line, right at the existing building, and it increases to almost nineteen feet out at the end of the addition. So, but what we want to do is basically just extend that south line of the building. In other words, essentially maintain the same setback that's already there.
Any questions for the architect?
May I add two pieces that we denied in the other call?
I did have a conversation with John Gray, the Transportation Director for Forest Lake with the buses. And what they would like to do is drop at the main campus first, exit the far end of our building, come west on 11th Avenue, down to First Avenue, and swing in, just like we said. But they'll only be dropping off the kindergarten students, so they'll be very few, it'll be very quick. In the afternoon, what we decided probably actually works best because there, the buses would all be there waiting, you know, for the students to come out, and it's a little different scenario. And so we've agreed in the afternoon to walk the students over to main campus. It makes it easier for Forest Lake, otherwise they've got to double up the number of buses because they all leave at the same time. And it's one time a day, you know, not several times a day like the fifth graders are doing it now. And we can have plenty of support and help, and that will really also decrease the congestion that would be possible in that afternoon pickup. But we will also offset preschool enough that it's just kindergarten parents picking up when the other students are leaving. Just wanted to add those two pieces. And then one more, we would really request from the city that they designate that area a school zone. I mean, we're now one of the biggest schools in the area, and it would help a lot to have flashing lights on 11th and slower speed limits when school is in session, those kinds of things, I think would also help the neighbors be able to pull out more easily rather than the cars that go flying by in some of those pieces. But that's a separate issue, just wanted to bring it up, that we think that would be also helpful.
Hold on a second, Cam. Any questions for the applicant? Thank you. This is a public hearing. The way this works is that we ask anyone who would like to speak to this application, please come up to the podium, state your name and address for the record, spend a couple of minutes giving us your thoughts on this application. After we've heard from everyone, we will close the public hearing. It'll come back to the planning commission for a decision. So that will officially open the public hearing. Does anyone wish to speak to this issue?
Susan Young, 9950, 199th Street North. I'm a little confuzzled because I understand that in the afternoon, they're going to walk all the kids that are on the, on the, let's just call it the north side of the campus, across 11th. But I'm a little confused with how parents who have kindergartners or preschoolers are going to get their kids that are on the south side of 11th. Because they're going to have to come through, pull a right from Second onto 11th, try and make the left off of 11th into the lower school building parking lot, and then come back out. And I'm, I understand that the school and transportation have tried to work together, but the number of left turns, right turns, cross turns, and backing and forthing, all it's going to take is a couple of those to get confused, especially with kids running back and forth across the street, to be a mellwahes. And so as y'all and as the school are considering this, I'm worried about kid safety and parent safety and not creating opportunities for conflict. The other thing, just from a purely professional perspective, and I mentioned this to Donovan, according to state law, they do need to have room for both trash and recycling dumpsters and organics dumpsters, if they're having lunches and things in there. So that enclosure area does need to be sufficiently large because of the size of the facility.
Thank you.
Could I, I think I can address your concern.
Might want to sit in the front row.
All right. That's a good idea.
In the afternoon, we would be walking all of the kindergartners across the street so that those that are, parents who are picking up other kids would pick up both their kindergartner and their main school student at the same place. So when we, I say we're going to walk across the street to take the bus, I guess I misspoke. All the kindergartners would go over and be dismissed from the main campus in the afternoon. In the morning, the buses would stop both places because it's just an extra quick drop at our building, so that wouldn't be a traffic issue. There will be a few parents that want to bring to both places. But again, right now, we are helping, we have a crossing guard across 11th, and so they can drop both their main school student and their annexed kindergartner at the main campus and walk those few that are going to be like that across with support rather than having to drive to both buildings. I think we can pretty much eliminate people having to drive to both buildings, both morning and night. You're going to get a couple that just want to do it, but...
How about the preschool students, though?
The preschool students were offsetting, so they won't be part of the mix. And the parents that have both are going to have to just either wait a little bit or will have a room that those kids can sit in at the main campus when they're dropping off or at the lower, at the annex, we'll figure that piece out, so that we have a completely separate set of drop-off parents and people a half hour later, basically. Something like a half hour later is what we're anticipating. So that we really are trying to minimize the number of people at any one time for congestion.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak to the applicant?
My name is Dawn Nelson. I live at 207 11th Avenue Southeast, directly across from Lila, both sections of the campus. I'm on the corner. Aren't I the lucky one? So, couple of questions. Exactly how many students have we nailed down in exact amount? Because last time he asked for a CUP amendment, he said it was going to be the last time they added students. Now we're here again. Second question, what percentage of them will be riding the buses and how many parents and vehicles do we expect to be coming through there, adding more traffic to that mess? Thirdly, is that gymnasium just going to be for preschoolers? Or are they going to be heading kids back and forth across the crosswalk all day long to use the gymnasium? Parking issues. We're adding more kids. Parking's already a nightmare, but you have more kids and bigger events. No more, they don't have event parking as it is. They're lined up and down the streets throughout the neighborhood. If you have more kids, where are those parking spaces going to come from? Oh, and it might be smarter to use the existing driveway onto 11th and change the footprint of the building to go from north to south instead of east to west. I've got a couple of ideas for you, couple of poster boards, if I could bring them to you.
Is this screen working, Donovan, for the video for...
For the cable, I believe it is.
Yeah, but not for us, right?
Well, yeah.
Just an idea. You could actually give it the same space, north and south, as you were east and west. I hate being on camera, by the way. Currently, we have a traffic disaster already. You got left out of Wine and Roses backing up traffic onto 61. You got left onto First Street backing up traffic on 61 and through here. When you make a left turn out of here during the school day, you have backed-up traffic back and forth over here. That proposed road is going to cause bigger issues, as somebody who lives on the corner and sees it every day. I put a lot of thought into this. I hope you guys are okay with this. 61. Cheap and easy way to solve some of this. I don't know which domains deal with it, but you make an entrance only into Wine and Roses, their other driveway could become their exit, solving some issues right there. Take this school issue, a right-in-only, a right-out-only. No more backups there. Make this a one-way, so there's no more left turns backing up traffic onto 61. And if you put your building this way for the school and parking over here, you could go left in, right out. No more backups. Now, I didn't go to college, but I live on that corner. So, and of course, the school zone. Would you guys consider any of these ideas?
Well, some of those...
Some of them I know aren't up to you, but you work with other people.
A lot of those are beyond the scope of this application.
Just, I, my interest is the traffic that this application is going to cause, not just me and my couple of neighbors, but I have people I work with that come from Wisconsin all the way down 97, and to avoid the roundabout, they're hitting my street. They tell me all the time, I drove by your house. It's not just Lila. There are other concerns. But adding more cars, more kids, more traffic to Lila is going to back up everything. And I can see it very clearly. I'm hoping you guys can see it, too. But if you would consider the idea of the changes, that driveway they're talking about going onto Second is going to cause more clusters, more nightmares. There's that little dirt road that goes from Second to Third right there, and I can see that suddenly getting an awful lot of use because people go the path of least resistance. It's human nature. If they see that little road right there, they're going to wait, hey, I can go one street over and avoid this traffic right here.
They already do.
I know they do, but I'm, bear with me.
No problem.
I've been living there.
Is there a dirt road between Second and Third?
Yeah.
Sure. Is it there? 10th Avenue is some piece?
No.
That's 10.
Is it 10?
Yeah, it's 10.
Because I know there's another road down here, but...
10th Avenue isn't paved?
No. It's a tiny little new road, only one person lives on. And the only reason I ever have to use it is because I cannot back out of my driveway on 11th and go that direction, or what is it, east? Because traffic doesn't stop for that. I have to pull out and go west, and if I want to go, I go around the block and take a left from Third onto 11th. But it's, you know, that street is a tiny little street. It's very suddenly going to get a lot of traffic. So it is going to push things further into the neighborhood instead of keeping it on 11th. If they could use that existing driveway and go onto 11th and make a right towards 61, that would save a lot of issues in that corner. And yes, the traffic does have a lot to do with the school. It does tie in with the application. Thank you for hearing me out.
Thank you. Does anyone else wish to speak to the application?
Joel Lacoste. I live at 967 Southeast Second, which is right on the corner of that 10th Avenue Southeast we were talking about and Second Street on the north side of that. I spoke at the other meeting also about traffic concerns we had. Some of them are addressed, but this appears to put more traffic through the neighborhood. Right now, with the way the school is operating, we get an hour of traffic in the morning and an hour of traffic at night. With just the constant cars starting to drop, coming down Second Street, pulling in, stopping. There were nine cars today parked from the corner of 11th all the way up, two across from 10th, tonight for pickup at 2:00. They start at about 1:15, traffic starts rolling in. They don't get done until about 2:15, 2:30 maybe, depending. We had some concerns. We have seen double parking on that stretch. Today, only one car made a U-turn on 10th Street, multi-point, or on Second Street in front of the school building to turn around and park, instead of using some other means of driving in. They turned in and did a multi-point U-turn. One car stopped on the east side of Second Street, and the little kid ran it through from between the cars, and they were, the car that stopped there was almost on the corner. So there are definite traffic and safety concerns with the kids running around. People aren't doing things... People aren't doing things the way you'd think they should be, following safety concerns for their own children right now. So, this is important to get the traffic flow correct. I too think First Street should be one, if you're gonna use this plan, the, all the, any left turning onto First should be curtailed. No left turn off of 11th to First, because that's gonna back traffic up all over. That's gonna be, even with flaggers and whatever. I think all the traffic coming on First should come down from Eighth. It's a more of an industrial spot, or commercial spot. It's got commercial on one side, there's only a couple of houses and an apartment building, small apartment building on Eighth. That puts a lot of the traffic out of the neighborhood. Obviously, you can't turn the traffic around, put their diagram, there's not enough parking for their events. There never will be. They park in front of fire hydrants, they park in my grass, they park in my neighbor's grass off of 10th right now. Adding additional stuff is gonna just make this a much tighter, more crowded neighborhood. It's not, it's too much and too small an area. I really think it should, would be better served somewhere else, rather than making this so tight and so crowded in this small little area, where trying to shoehorn everything into a very small spot. They don't have enough space to really make this safe for everybody. We were, we expressed concerns, because there were people double parking and blocking the traffic, blocking an ambulance. My wife has chemo-induced asthma. They addressed some of that, but I don't, I'm not sure that this is gonna be a good long-term fit for a neighborhood. People exiting and going north, there's school buses that use that at that time to pick up students. If we have people trying to get out of the neighborhood, going through the neighborhood, it's gonna be more crowded, not less, with this left turn onto Second to go north, everybody. I really don't, don't see that this is necessarily gonna be a good fit. It's too much.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else wish to speak? It's public.
I can't address them all, I can't remember all, but there's a few that I think, hopefully will see that our intent is good. I, I agree with the double parking and the other pieces, that's why we're asking for that to be all, no parking, and ask for police to enforce that along Second Avenue. It just is crazy what some people do, and we support anything the city can help with. The First Avenue piece, I'm not opposed to the traffic, we really want it to come from the north to the south on First Avenue, but for the buses be the only exception, and it's a right turn, it's not a left turn, in that it, it would, it puts them off of their routes too much if they have to go way up into the neighborhood to come back around. So, we would ask if you do that, and I would actually support it for the cars, that you make the exception for the buses. In terms of more students, we are not asking for a single more student grades K through five. We're expanding the preschool a little bit and why we have the extra room, and we are proposing an offset time for them, so that during the times that, that would be comparable to now, that there, for, between the two buildings, we're not increasing our CUP by one student. It's for the extra early childhood students who would be offset, and at that time would be by themselves, not with the other congestion that's going on.
Still students, even if they're not the regular students, that's still 50 more students.
Not at the same time, though, is my point. That's the only point I'm trying to make. I mean, if you're talking congestion, if you have 20 cars that are trying to compete for space, and you take 10 away, they come a half hour later, you still have 20 cars, but you don't have the same congestion. I know it's longer, but it's not the same congestion.
I need to have the conversation come this way, please.
I'm sorry. I apologize. And I, I forgot my other point, so I'll, I'll leave it at those.
So, well, I will finish up, because this will be the next question we ask you, that the total, we're not increasing the CUP headcount.
We are to increase the early childhood numbers, but it's not any additional headcount for K through five. We're increasing, I think it's 50 students, is that what we're increasing, for early childhood, which they can't ride the buses anyway, so it's a separate, separate set of issues, and if we offset them, they're not part of the congestion that's intermixing with the buses and those pieces. Again, I, I understand it prolongs the amount of time that there are extra people in the community, but it's not adding to the direct congestion at the time of the regular school drop-off and pickup.
I'll make sure I get this right. You're adding 50 more to campus.
Fifty.
But not on the same time schedule, they're offset 30 minutes.
Right.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak to the application?
Let me just make a, clarify just a couple things here. There, for the few parents who have a K through five student to drop off and a kindergartner to, to, to drop off, what they would do is they would drop off the K through five student first, so they would make a right turn into the main campus, go through the campus, come back out onto 11th Street westbound, and then make a right-hand turn into the, in, on First Street, back into the, the annex building, so that they're, they're, they're working with the flow of traffic that will already exist. They won't be fighting, they won't be, they won't be turning across. Yeah, it would be sheer madness to, for them, and to, to, to drop a student off first at, and they would figure this, I mean, we wouldn't even have to tell them, they would figure this out themselves. But if you make the right-hand turn into the main campus, and then the left-hand turn, come westbound on 11th, make a right-hand turn into, to the annex, and then left turn north on Second, you, you, you wouldn't be adding to the, the congestion of 11th Street if you had two students. There's a very, I mean, we don't know exactly how many there are going to be, I mean, we estimate, you know, we've, we've done some estimating on that, but we, it's, it's a relatively, at this point in time, it's a relatively small percentage of people that have that, that fit that demographic.
Dennis, doesn't that contradict your traffic flow diagram? Your type, your traffic diagram shows.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. It, it does for those few student, those few parents who have both a K through five student, or I mean, a, a one through five student in the main building, and then a kindergartner in the annex building. So that, whether it's 20, you know, 15, 20 parents, that they would come and they would have to make a right enter, but the, the, the school is, is committed to educating the parents who are just coming for a, to drop off a kindergartner, and there will be more of those than, than double up. They will come from the north on First Street.
As long as you're here, will the parking lot be noted as a one-way parking only, one-way traffic only? Is the parking lot only?
Yeah, for, for us to enforce this kind of a, a traffic port, and it absolutely will have to be marked as, as one-way. You had asked, or, and somebody else had brought up a question, I'd, I'd just take a second, about the multipurpose room. It says gymnasium on there, but it's a 40 by 40 space. It's, it's not even this big. It's not as big as this room is right here. So, it, and it'll have, you know, it's, the, the, the ceiling at the, at the eve line is about 12 feet, and it'll go up to about 16 feet. So it's a, it's a, it's an activity room for, for little kids, is what it is. It's not a basketball arena or, or that sort of thing, so. Thank you.
My question was answered on the quantity of students. That's a guarantee, right? No more than 50?
In, in terms of additional?
Yeah.
For preschool?
For any, I'm, I'm talking both, it's just an additional 50, right?
Right, the way, the, the way the.
Yes, that is correct. You see, the.
They keep separating these things, and I want it clear.
The application is to go from 925 max to 975 max.
What we try to do is keep this, this overall maximum enrollment thing as simple as it can be, and it's, it's one number for both buildings, and it includes both preschool and K through five.
Right.
At this point in time.
Now, I can't remember your name. He has stressed over and over and over that he's offsetting the preschoolers, which is wonderful. I wanna know, does that mean they're offsetting the events for the preschoolers, or is our event parking still gonna be a bigger nightmare?
The event parking, if, if it's at night, we have started running shuttles from this parking lot, and we used to do from family pathways, I don't know if we still do or not, and make that known. They are still very busy events, but we do, and we certainly can encourage them riding that shuttle. It's a regular school bus that we rent and run continue, continuous routes for events during the day. Those have tended to not be as big, and so we haven't run a shuttle there. And I guess I'd ask the question, is the night where your real concern is, or have there been events during the day that?
During the day also. We had parking all the way past, two houses farther north from us during the day, including the spaces in, in front of the fire hydrant in front of my house, that we've had to call the police on to get the, you know, and all they do is ticket, they don't have a tow or anything, but we have, and that occurred broad daylight during the day mostly, but we also have it at night.
Yeah. And we certainly can look at those, minimizing them or creating, you know, not as larger group, or so many are performing at the same time. I, I can think of the end of year where we have some bigger events during the year, during the day, they're not coming to mind, but then a lot of things don't come to my mind anymore, so there probably are one or two.
There's probably the other auditorium. And as far as traffic, the auditorium at the other campus, more events.
Oh, that, that is another piece, that we are, at the secondary school over on Fenway, we are adding both a full-size gymnasium with bleachers that'll seat 750, and we're adding an auditorium that would seat 450, and so we will start having some of the lower school events at the other building for those reasons too, just because it's a bigger space and spread out a little more.
I'd like to just address the traffic that was brought up on 10th.
Sir, please come up.
It is a, a narrow dirt, one lane. There's neighbors park on, I have a, vehicles parked on one side, neighbor has vehicles parked, people park in the grass, but we've, the traffic right now is anywhere from six to a dozen cars in the morning and in, in the afternoon. Occasionally, it's less. Most of them do go to the school, but some do, are using it as a shortcut and going and turning north. They're bypassing the, the backlog on 11th and turning on Third and then dropping down through the dirt street, sometimes fairly fast. There are a couple of students that walk that street, or cut through the neighborhood and go to the, somewhere beyond, and there are some students that do walk Second Street. And there are no sidewalks or anything on either one of those streets, so traffic speed is a concern also, because there are tra, is traffic that uses 10th as a shortcut. Apparently, they don't know that Third Street goes through and they can turn on 11th by going all the way down Third Street. Maybe we need to request signage to make that not a through street or something. My understanding was it was abandoned by the city sometime in the 70s or 80s as a street, but there is a house with an address on 10th Avenue. But, and the city does plow it, so I'm not sure what the exact status of the street is, and the way it's drawn on the map is correct, it's at, it's not really drawn, it's at an angle, the right-of-way is at an angle to Second Street. It's not square. I know Dawn's map shows it square. It looks square now, but it actually runs diagonal through the right-of-way for the street on my, based on my plat map for my house.
Joe, there's an exist, Joe, there's an existing sidewalk, isn't there, on the west side of, of Second Street going?
Only by the school.
By the school.
Just to their parking lot entrance. That's the only place.
I am a current Lila parent of a kindergartner, and also, oh.
State your name and address for the record, please.
Absolutely. My name is Melissa Dahl, and I am a current Lila parent of a kindergartner, and also I have a child in the kinder prep program. I love Lila. When we moved back to the Forest Lake community in July, we were able to have the opportunity to tour different schools, and being in the Lila environment, we knew there was something really special with this school. And being there the last four months, we've seen some of the best talent in the Forest Lake community that, working there, as well as having top talent from all around the world. And with their curriculum, not only have my children learned two languages, but they also are learning social skills and community skills that are going to build them to be strong leaders for the Forest Lake community when they grow up. What excites me about this new building is that my children will be working in an environment that has been, the functionality is for a school, as it is currently a clinic setting, although the school's done a great job trying to accommodate, to make this work for the students. Having that indoor gym space allows my, the children to have gross motor skills worked on. As you all know today, that it felt like negative 12, the children were not able to go outside and be able to exert that gross motor skills, and so they would be able to have that with the new space, as well as just in general more space for learning. And also, I know that the Lila community is really focused on being inclusive and inviting, and this does allow additional students to join and be able to be a part of the Lila family. Something that I, as the discussion has been going on, that I have noticed is that it has not been reflected that a percentage of these students also go to before and after care programs. And so, yes, there may be additional 50 students going into the program, but they may also be dropped off much earlier in the morning, or they may be staying after work because their parents are full-time working parents. And then also something that, and Cam can reflect, if I'm stating this incorrectly, is that currently, the annex building hosts the fifth-grade students, and those students would be transitioning to the main campus, and so the current traffic consists of kinder prep students and also fifth-grade parents that are picking or dropping off. But personally, as a parent who currently is in this situation, I feel that the new layout actually is safer for my kindergartner to cross the, the street and the current situation, and so I, I feel, I really truly believe that supporting the growth of Lila is going to help the community. These families that are coming into Forest Lake are supporting the current YMCA. They are shopping at Target. They're spending, they're getting ice cream at Ernie's when it's not freezing. And so I truly believe that Lila is driving a positive impact, and I do apologize that it does cause any traffic, but I also know that Forest View causes traffic, and also St. Pete's. You know, it is predictive, certain times of the day that naturally traffic is going to be at a school. And I know as a parent, I am more than willing to help and support and do what I can to help alleviate any of those pain points in any way that I can. So, thank you for hearing my voice.
Thank you. Does anyone else wish to speak to this application? I'll ask one more time, does anyone else?
I've lived.
He's coming up to it. You always have to come to the microphone, you know, you're on TV and we wouldn't want the cable audience to miss this.
I've lived in that, that spot, we bought our house, we've been there 24 years. When we moved in, it was a hospital and a doctor's clinic. There was some traffic all day long, there wasn't.
There wasn't a mass-packed school in the morning and at night. So it has changed dramatically the neighborhood, moving the school to Lila there. Unlike, there is a whole school building that's almost abandoned in Forest Lake that's going to be torn down apparently, where the high school used to be, that had traffic there when I was growing up. I actually went to school there, I've lived in Forest Lake my whole life. So there are other options or areas within the city for a school to expand and grow. That's just a thought that occurred to me.
Thank you.
Dawn Osterkamp, I live at nine four nine Southeast Seventh Street. And I partake in all this traffic, get held up going to work or coming home from work. But they have the school that's over by the airport. Why don't they shift the fifth and sixth graders over there where there's not so much traffic problem? There's not so many people living there or driving there and just contain what they have.
Does anyone else wish to speak to the application?
Hello, I'm Jessica Portias. My address, one three four three five, two hundred and Fifth Street, Scandia. I'm relatively new to Scandia, Forest Lake community. My husband and I moved almost three years ago, and I hadn't even heard of Lila. It's not what brought me here, but I'm really glad I did hear about it. You know, I have heard nothing but great things about the school, the teachers. I personally love it for myself, for my kids, you know. They've, my kindergarten's already correcting my Spanish, so I mean, it's doing great things. I understand the traffic is a major concern. You know, there are several options, again, the before and after program. There is a church lot, drop-off and pickup. You know, currently my situation right now, I have a preschooler in the Annex Building and a kindergartner. And so, and there's a few of us that way where we didn't want to be circling around and picking up here and picking up there. Lila did work with us to have our kindergartners walk across the street safely with the help of cross guards. And so currently what I like to do two days of the week, because the other days my kids are in the before and after program, I park in the Annex Lot. I do not park along the street. You know, I, I can't speak for everybody, all the parents, you know. It is unfortunate if there is double parking and things like that going on. And maybe, maybe there can be more communication with the parents. You know, I don't know the exact fix, but anyway, you know, I park in the Annex Lot and, you know, I drop off my preschooler at this building in the morning, and then I walk across the street to drop off my son. And then at the end of the day, they walk my son over to the Annex Building where I pick up both of my kids. And, you know, I think it's great that the school is willing to work with some of those, some of us parents who are in that situation, because nobody wants to be doing laps around. And, you know, I hope that we can all figure out, you know, a good flow for this. Because, like I said, I mean, this, the classrooms are cramped, you know. And it, it goes to show, you know, how good of a school Lila is by opening their doors to this recently closed Sunshine Preschool. Those parents were panicking, wanting to know if they could get their kids in somewhere because it's shut down suddenly, and Lila opened their doors to them. And, you know, so yes, there have been changes that have been made, you know, to try to accommodate some of these kids, whether they'll stay for sure, you know, who knows? But, you know, we are, we are wanting to, you know, make this work to help the kids grow and learn, and we want to be good neighbors. And I don't know, just hope we can all come to a good conclusion, I guess, so.
Thank you. Does anyone else wish to speak to the application? I'll ask one more time, does anyone else wish to speak to the application? Seeing no one coming forward, we will close the public hearing and bring it back for a decision with the planning commission. Commissioners?
Chairman, I have just a couple of questions regarding the site plan. The, the children's play area, the new play area, that does not go to the east side of the existing building, right? It, it just is on the north side of the building? And that play area will have a fence around it, I assume?
Let me answer the second question first. It's going to have, the, the play area will be completely fenced with a four-foot-high or whatever height we decide on, chain link fence. But the, we are planning on extending the play area. If you've been over there and experienced the north side of the, the building, there is, it's kind of an unusually laid-out parking. We've tried to figure out, there's a lot of pave, a lot of asphalt paving there. And for the number of parking spaces that it actually yields, it's, it's not quite wide enough to have another row of parking in there. So we're taking off about, actually going forty feet north of the north edge of the building. It includes a ten-foot wide, what's a, ten-foot wide sidewalk now, and then there'll be thirty feet of asphalt. And our plan is to cover that with a, this urethane play surface, so it, it won't be just a hard paved surface. But we're planning on leaving that in and then, but carrying it around, there's an entrance into the building on the east side. There's a sidewalk from the sidewalk that goes along the street comes perpendicular to the building. And the play area will extend around there, so there will be some grassed area that's part of the play area there as well.
And that area will also be fenced?
It'll all be fenced, yeah. It'll all be an enclosed area, and it'll be L-shaped.
All right. And as long as I got you up there, a couple more questions regarding the site plan. The, there was a comment made regarding the trash enclosure area. Is, is there an issue regarding?
No, we'll, we'll get that fixed. That was, that was added in haste and, and should have been. There, there's, there's plenty of room back there to, to handle both dumpsters, and we will, we will make sure that it's sized to handle both a recycle and a trash dumpster.
Would it take up some of the parking spaces that are?
Well, we, we, the, the site plan's been a little more fluid here than it usually is just for several, for several reasons. One is, we wanted to move, I mean, to, to incorporate that play area where we do. We have to move the, the, the entrance drive or the exit, what will be the exit drive onto Second to the north there. And there are three large mature trees that are right there in the corner. And on your site plan, it shows those trees coming down and parking in there. But since we, since we need to have further setback there, I just had a meeting today with the school, and what we're going to do is we're going to, we're going to salvage those, we're going to leave those trees in there, so we're going to eliminate another, we're going to eliminate a couple of spark, parking spaces. And, and I can kind of slide them back and forth. I've already figured out the distance that I need. So I'm essentially going to eliminate two more parking places. But we're significantly beyond the, the ordinance requirement for parking for both buildings. And we came, when we came to Donovan, with our, in our pre-app meeting on this, we, we brought up this issue about parking, you know, as an initial issue because, or as an initially, because we wanted to make sure that there wasn't any, there wasn't any problem with that. And because, it's my understanding that because both buildings are included in the CUP, that he felt that we could count, you know, we could count, use total traffic, count for both sides of the, the required traffic for both sides of the road. Even if we were, I, I think we might be a, a space or two short on the, on the north side, depending on how you, again, depending on how you, how you look at the parking requirement. But if you take both buildings together, we have more than enough parking for both places.
Well, if the parking traffic flow is one-way from west to east, have you considered angle parking?
Well, we don't.
I mean, why wouldn't you do that?
Well, the initial, my initial answer was to you was going to be, we didn't consider it because it didn't gain us any stalls. It actually takes away.
No, but what it does do, it allows for people to easily back out of a parking space and go across, against the one-way traffic.
Yes.
And, and that, we don't want that to do. I, I think you're saying you don't want that to happen.
Don't want what to happen? Or I'm, I'm sorry.
You don't want people going the wrong way on the one-way.
No, right, that's right. I mean, we are going to, we are, we are going to have to put up, there's going to be, have to be significant signage putting, put up particularly initially here until people get the hang of it, because it's just been, you know. There, there hasn't been any, any limitations on, even though there's already some angled parking in there, you can, you can go both, you know, you can, you can enter and exit off of Eleventh and Second now, you know. And we hope to put a stop to that by just having, whoops, I'm sorry, having the traffic directed through from First Street to, and exit on Second Street.
Well, clearly one way to do that is with angle parking.
Yeah, I, I think it's something that certainly could be considered. I, I guess I'd like to talk that over with, with Ryan Goodman, the city engineer, and just see what he thinks about that.
One, one last question regarding the site plan. The property owner to the north of the site on the west side of Second has a privacy fence. He's got, I think that's his fence. He's got a large, high, yes. And the multiple family building to the, to the west.
Northwest, yeah.
Doesn't, there's no fence there. With the parking lot and with the headlights traffic, I mean, we're, is there any consideration for fencing, opaque fencing along that, along your property line, holding back car headlights from that, those existing residents?
I mean, you've raised a valid point there, but we didn't, I mean, at this point in time, we're not proposing a fence along there because it's kind, it's kind of an existing condition.
Well, no, it's not an existing condition. I mean, well, it is, it is on that one side, but on the south side it isn't, we're expanding it.
No, right, but the, along what would be the, on the L, on the, the west, the east-west line, just north of our addition, right there. There's a heavy hedge of existing shrubbery and small trees along there. And our plan is basically, our, or at least our plan up to this point anyway, had been to just leave that in place. I mean, we could, the, the other way to look at it would be to tear all that out and then plant new shrubs in, but it would then take, you know, it's going to take four or five years for that to.
Or put up.
To mature, or, or, or have to, or put up a, a, some kind of an opaque fence.
I'm just surprised none of those neighbors are here to voice that concern. I mean, those are headlights going right into the back of their units. And, and on the south side also, there'd be, they're facing the units. And I know there aren't a lot of windows there on the south side of that building, but still, it's, it's, it's direct headlight parking right into their yard, yeah.
Other questions? Commandments? Commissioners?
I have a lot of thoughts. I have, I have a lot of thoughts, and I almost think, just as I'm thinking in my head, there's so many things I'm thinking about that I think I need answers to that I'd almost like to table this and, and come back to this at another time. You know, I have a lot of questions and concerns about traffic flow. I have a lot of questions and concern as to why the building wasn't laid out possibly like Dawn brought to us with the building on the north side as an option. You know, the school zoning, the one-ways, traffic, parking. I've been in that neighborhood and it is, it's a mess. And I'd love to, you know, be on board with this. I, I know there's a lot of this that's out of our control, that the city has to step up and take care of. But I, I don't know how I feel about this right now.
Eric?
Donovan, can you clarify with, with us? What is the limitations we have on traffic on these roads around this project in regards to this application from like a, a legal perspective? What, what are our limitations on what we can and cannot require an applicant to do?
Well, basically, we're limited to the improvements on their site, you know, or just like the right-of-way adjacent to their site.
So I mean, even the traffic plan that they present, we can't actually dictate that or tell them they have to change it? Other than that, that that's on their physical site, correct?
Correct. I mean, if you had a concern regarding the, say, direction of it or something, I think that's within the, you know, commission's purview. But to require, you know, like the, you know, as, as mentioned, you know, a limitation of turning, you know, turning movements off of Eleventh or something, I think would not be within the planning commission's, you know, authority.
For clarification, we also have no authority, we don't as a commission, or can put it in to this plan to dictate. And, and I'll be really clear, I think some of these things are good ideas, but I think it's just, the jurisdiction is elsewhere. To have no parking signs on both sides of Second Street, to have a, a no-throughway on, I think it's Tenth. Those are things that we could not selectively do as part of this plan, correct?
I think as requirements, but as a, something of the city shall consider, I think is appropriate, you know, construction.
Separate of this application, though?
Well, I mean, I, you know, I've been taking notes on, on the, the, you know, the, the applicant suggestions involving no parking during school hour signs on Second. You know, the school zone designation. I can't comment now on like what exactly the mechanics of instituting those, you know, what, you know, what sort of, what process that takes. You know, if it's, you know, if it's even, you know, basically what, what's, what's requirements. So I don't want to over-promise on that. But it certainly seems like a, you know, an excellent idea to minimize that, the, the impacts on neighbors.
I particularly like the school zone. For a whole host of reasons. I don't think it's necessarily something we can force in this plan, but I want to say that that was a topic that was discussed and we kind of, I don't know, kicked the can down the road and said, hey, well, the city will look at it or something when they were here last time in this area. Can you, and I don't expect you to answer this question now, but can you look back and see what was done or what would need to be done to have that implemented in this region and bring that back to us at a future point in time?
Sure. The, you know, there, there's the rapid flashing lights now, and I'm wondering if that was potentially to compensate for some other restriction that they couldn't just bring a full school zone in, or maybe that was just an initial step. I'm not sure, but I can investigate that one.
Those are my questions. One of the, the comments I had, and, and I believe it was Dawn Nelson's plans that she drew up, and the, from a conceptual standpoint, one of the issues that I have with that plan, and I think it's a good idea, and I always like ideas, is that one of the great benefits of having the building go east-west is it eliminates another access point on the very busy Eleventh Street. And when we have many, many access points that are very close together, that causes a lot of problems. And so I think the east-west through this property is better than a curve through it going from Eleventh to Second. There's, there's benefits and negatives both ways, but Eleventh, I think, is the biggest issue in the neighborhood. issue in the neighborhood. I don't disagree that it's gonna offset problems on these adjoining neighborhoods, but I don't, I don't think we can do much as a commission beyond what the applicants proposed for traffic. And I, I feel the pain on the neighbors there. It is, it is a lot of traffic. But I also know that Lila works with them as much as they possibly can, so.
My comments for Cam. Cam, for, you guys have been here numerous times, and we always were told that you run arrival and dismissal with military precision. It sounds like it's, the wheels maybe left the bus a little bit here. What can you do to assure us that we can clean some of this double parking up, some of these other issues that in prior meetings with you, you, we, there was no issue because it ran like clockwork at your site.
I've got two, two comments, and, and agree that you, you just have a hard time controlling some parents. Part of the issue, as I've sat here and tried to process as people speak, is the annex has been an overflow, an additional building, where now we're actually trying to make it kind of its own entity with kindergarteners and preschoolers, and have its own administrator and those kinds of pieces. And so I, I take a lot of the responsibility that things on the north side of 11th haven't been as good as they should be because we've been more concerned with the main campus site as the main school, and we walk kids over there and they do all their things over there. And so I think it is, I think it's something that we probably have been negligent on. But as far as precision, if you come and, and watch our parents now drive through our lot, we, we had the problem with people pulling in the, the very far east end of the big lot by the church there and coming right back across, you know, 100 cars because they somehow got in there. But we, over time and being consistent, we have eliminated that where we don't, another piece is, we don't allow cars to come in, the middle entrance, we save that for the buses, so that we don't have congestion when the buses come, and now they're waiting on 11th to get in because cars are coming in and out. And, and we have trained our parents to that, on that side of the street. And I think we can do it on the other side. Absolutely committed to it. I understand the issues they're talking about, and that's why we're asking a little bit for the city to help, because we can't control what they're doing on the street. I've actually asked the police, can I go out and, and direct traffic on the street? Because I'd be willing to do that, and they said absolutely not. And so we're confined to, you know, the driveways and the interior, so if we can work with the city and get some no parking signs and that they do police that, I mean, again, a few people are gonna have to get a ticket to, to really believe those signs. I believe we can police the driveways and the traffic flow and keep it moving. I am absolutely convinced of that. Will there still be a lot of traffic? Yeah. It's a school. I mean, no one wants the school next to them. They, I, you know, it sounds easy to move out to another place or to use the, the school that the Forest Lake is, is giving up. We actually pursued that. We talked to Forest Lake and said, we'll buy it. We understand that it's already there, those kinds of things, and they said it is so decrepit that that's why we're abandoning it. It costs more money to fix than you could do to tear it down and start over. And they, they wouldn't give us any land besides the building, even as we talked about renting it. So it's, they're all good ideas. Nobody wants the extra traffic. The city has to decide if it's worthwhile to, to try and make it work. We're committed to it, absolutely. We want to be here, and we want to be good neighbors, and we take it seriously. Buster on 11th Avenue there, he was on our neck for the first two or three years, and now he comes over to have coffee or a donut or something, but hasn't. I haven't heard a complaint out of them in, in several years because we've really worked to, to, you know, correct those things. And, and we are, we, we have missed the ball on Second Avenue. And I think First Avenue, if we can draw a fair amount of a two there, will help because it's more of a commercial street. And the housing that is along there with the lights, they have bigger driveways, bigger, bigger spaces. I don't think it'll be the same hardship for them that it is on Second. Thank you.
Mr. Black?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman. You know, I think the city of Forest Lake is very fortunate to have Lila as a, as a school in, in, in the, in the city. It's, it's a wonderful school, and the little bit, I've been exposed to it. I, I'm just real proud to know that the school is here. But the school is not an island of its own. The, the, there's other parts of the community that are here also, and we have to consider the, the bigger picture. The planning commission does have the authority to take final action on the CUP.
Correct.
And the main responsibility of any government is protection of health, safety, general welfare of the citizens, and I think traffic's a big part of that. And I am not feeling good about proceeding tonight without a further traffic study. I, I think the applicants along with the city have to hire a traffic consultant to really take a hard look at this. I, I, I think the track, the comment was made maybe too much in, in a small space. I, I don't know if that's true or not, but I do know that there's a lot of left-turn movements, a lot of delay of traffic. When you have a lot of delay times to make left-turn movements, people get anxious and they make, they make turns that they shouldn't make, and, and there are accidents, and it, 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 it just appears to me that, that this needs to be studied a little bit more than what we have before us tonight. We, we have a traffic flow chart that shows residential, the, the buses on the one side of the drive going in and out, and a comment was made that maybe not all buses are gonna turn to the south. Some might go to the north as they leave the site. We said we'll try to encourage all the people to enter the site going south on First Street going into the site, but we don't know if all the people will do that. Some people might come in from the south, and then we got the bus, it, 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 it's, it's a plan that's on, on paper that looks like it might work, but we don't know if it's gonna work. And, and we, we can't control everything. And I, I am just not comfortable, Mr. Chairman, proceeding tonight without a, a more thorough traffic study on this.
Do you wish to make a motion?
I'd make a motion to table this and, and ask the applicant to work with the city on hiring a traffic consultant to look at the total scope of this, including the existing traffic with the existing school and the proposed new addition, and the traffic flows, and to come back with us with a report from a traffic consultant.
Do you have a second?
And that the applicant maybe consider, if, if the one-way traffic is indeed part of the proposed design, that we look at both the, the angle parking and the screening of adjacent properties, and, and the revised trash dumpster screening if necessary.
I would second that.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. We need to set a date for the table. When are we?
I'd recommend February 13th.
February 13th?
Would that provide enough time for the applicant?
Well, it's not us. It's how long it's gonna take to do the traffic study. I, I mean, it might be possible, but I, that would be, that would be very ideal.
And I would encourage the city participate in the cost of the traffic study with the
Do you want to go to the 27th? Is that a better date, February 27?
So how legally, how does this work? Do we have to set a date today, or?
If you're tabling an item, yes. It's tabled to a certain date. We could do, table it in the future if you're not prepared.
Yeah. We'll, we'll try hard to do 13th, make it work.
You can always request to have it removed from the agenda, pushed it out, correct? So we'll go for the 13th. So what this means is that we're done discussing this item for this evening. The applicant will work with the city to work on traffic and some of these other issues, and then the plan is that we will convene on February 13th to take up this action again.
Chair, are you closing the public hearing, or are you continuing the public hearing? Because I don't believe that.
We, we, we had the public hearing this evening. We traditionally will take comment if something gets moved or tabled. We have traditionally taken additional comment, but it's not required to have a public hearing. Am I correct, Donovan? We closed it earlier. So thank you all for coming this evening. We appreciate all your comments and your participation. We have reached a other section. Donovan, we'll start with you.
I would say we don't have an agenda for the, the January, you know, 23rd potential meeting time, so we will, you know, have that February 13th meeting. And I have really nothing else to report, you know. I was all excited to, you know, tell you that your computer's working better, that, you know, Dan did some upgrades, but it really kind of, not the time, I think.
It might have been upgraded, but.
Or AV, you know, potentially.
Commissioners?
Kevin? Donovan, I have, as long, as long as we talked a little bit about this stuff, could you tell us kind of the process, what would happen, or how the city would go about if, let's say they want to look at doing something about school zoning and reducing speeds and putting up, you know, the flashing lights or the slower speed signs, or, or changing to one-ways, or, or to putting up no parking signs? How, how does that process all take place?
It's, it's a city council function to, like, to actually institute, you know, parking rules. And I imagine there's some sort of study involving school zones. And, you know, this is something that, you know, Ryan knows of, you know, by the back of his hand. And I've only worked with parking, like with the lakefront, you know, park, Lakeside Memorial Park parking lot, so I don't, and that was, but basically the city council is, is the actual arena where that, you know, it takes place.
Would that come from a recommendation from us, or would that come from, you know, like say, let's say we wanted to approve this next time they come back, but we have some apprehension about all that. Could we approve it subject to the council looking at parking zone, road directions?
Yeah, I think, I mean, I think you'd say, you know, you know, the, the city, you know, this, it's a condition of approval, the city, you know, shall, shall consider, you know, instituting these other changes, but not, not know, not having complete information at this moment, but, you know, by the next meeting, I'll have much more information on what exactly this, you know, the, what those steps are.
And that was my apprehension tonight, and, and my only other concern was generally talk about events and things they do, which sometimes are during the day or sometimes after hours, and if we have parking restrictions on those roads during, let's say, certain times of the day, if they have an event during that time, where are they gonna park?
Yeah. Hey, but we've already kind of moved beyond that agenda. I don't, I'm, I'm willing to answer general questions, but.
Yeah, I'm just asking general questions.
Yeah.
I'm sorry. I'm just asking on the process. I don't mean to carry on that because that, that's been tabled, so I can't have discussion about how the process works?
Well, if it's just general questions.
Yeah, just general process. I'm just curious.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I really can't, you know, I have to find out more about actual, you know, kind of structural pieces of, you know, no parking, or, you know, yeah.
Okay, sorry. I just, I was just curious how that whole process works.
Hey, what's going on with the Hula property? Is there anything you can report, or?
It's going to the EDA. There's a proposal for this, like, I may, I just saw one conceptual, you know, elevation drawing of it, of a, you know, there's conference space, maybe it's hotels, apartment, there is performance art space maybe.
Multi-use.
And when I asked, you know, but Dan Undom is, is the point person, staff person on that one, and I asked him just general questions around what's they asking everything, and he, he didn't seem like he had much information, so.
I have to say.
I mean, but, you know, come to the EDA meeting on Monday night, and you can.
It's canceled.
Oh, canceled?
It's canceled.
Oh. The EDA meeting is canceled on Monday.
Would our liaison, I'd like to say a few words this evening. Madam Mayor?
Elect. Elect until Monday. So thank you. A couple of follow-up comments of some of the discussion tonight. For one, as I sat in the audience, I heard a lot of questions related to enforcement and traffic, traffic flow signage. I can tell you that I, from my perspective, I'm happy to give council agenda time to those topics. So however staff can work with the applicant and however we can work together, I think to Donovan's point, Ryan is going to know some of these answers of what's possible. I heard some things that seemed to be quite, it's quite simple. I also know that sometimes what I think is simple turns out to be not so simple, so I, my recommendation is let's, let's staff work through what's possible. Certainly things like increased enforcement during, and asking for some additional police drive-bys during event time, those things are scheduled and known, and if we need to do some increased ticketing on double parking, you only need to do that for a couple of events for people really to start getting the message and changing behavior. So I'm happy to give agenda time and staff time to kind of work through those items, so let's work together. And then as it relates specifically to the Hula property, what Donovan was partially corrected is coming to the next EDA meeting as a concept, that it will be the first time that that will have been presented in a public meeting. And so it's really in the, I call it in the pre-concept stages. I just saw today, the Star Tribune just posted an article on it online that has some pictures of what's being proposed, but from the city's perspective, certainly from my perspective, we are pre-concept and just starting a conversation. Certainly it's one that will be an active conversation given its magnitude and importance in the community. So EDA meeting on the 28th is the first time it will be discussed, and that's kind of your opportunity to learn more, so tune in. Any questions for me?
We're all scared, are you not of your mayor-elect?
No, don't be scared. I should be scared of you. So we've got a couple of open positions coming up. Those appointments are expected to be made on the 28th. And I know in particular on this, on this board, quorum issues are of concern and something I'm factoring in on what we're going to do with those open positions, so stay tuned. No decisions will be made on the 14th. Those will be done in the council meeting on the 28th, so. And as always, thank you for your service. Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
Thanks.
Eric? Donovan or Bailey, I have a question. When, since, I can't remember if it was the first meeting in January or the second meeting in January, or is it out in February where we do our annual appointment of a chair?
Well, the, the terms end on January 31st, and so that, I don't know if we've set a time, but it seemed like it would be appropriate during the first, the first meeting following that time to, you know, make that sort of decision.
So it's February?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else on the other?
Oh, I have one. I don't think, believe I sent an email out. I was thinking I'm amiss, but the, the Everton Avenue, you know, variance decision, the variance, the planning commission approval was appealed, so it will go to city council. The hearing will be on, on January 28th.
Very good.
So you're not required to attend or anything, but I wanted to notify you that that appeal has been filed. So you're not required to attend or anything, but I wanted to not, notify you that that, uh, appeal has been filed.
Anything else?
That's a surprise.
Yeah.
Dennis?
So as far as the, um, comp plan, have we, is that all signed, sealed and delivered at this point in time? Is there, is there any other consideration that this, um, this body gives to that?
Not this body. Right now, we're in the, the inter-jurisdictional review period, which ends, um, in March. And then it, um, then we, you know, look at the, then staff looks at the plan, um, addresses any review comments or simply just, you know, duly noted as a response to some, some comments, uh, or make some, some, some changes. That goes to council for then the, kind of the blessing for it to be, um, sent to met council. Met council then does their, well, I'm sorry, it's already been kind of, well, it goes to met council and then they, their review. And then the final adoption follows that review. And of course, there can be some, you know, back and forth with met council if, if they require something else. But it, it doesn't go back to the planning commission.
So does, how long does this process take with the met council and stuff like that? When does this thing, is there a drop dead date and when this thing has to be approved or by the council? I mean, it ultimately has to be approved by?
No, the, the drop dead date is the actual, the submission time. We have extension. I believe that's, that, that ends March 29th. But, so I have to have it in, in that, for their review by then. But, you know, they, 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 they could take 60 days maybe as part of their thing. So I'm not thinking that, um, we're going to have much discussion right until, you know, early summer. Because this, it's really the first stage because then next you start to do the, you know, do the comprehensive rezoning to make the, the zoning, the zoning code consistent with the comp plan.
Yeah, I was just curious when that process.
We'll see a lot more pieces, but.
Yeah, I was just curious when that process was going to start.
The met council says you're required to do it within nine months. That would be really aggressive, I think. You know, we'll, we'll be applying ourselves to it, but I'm not optimistic that we'll make that nine-month deadline.
So is that, is that primarily a city council process or, or do we get involved in that at all?
Well, there's zoning text, it's, it's basically a zoning text amendment.
Text or anything like that?
Oh, yeah, it's zoning, yeah. It's zoning text amendment could, and, and zoning map amendment, because what the comp plan contains.
So just like the, these little things that have come up for the last, however many years. There's going to, am I correct that there's going to be pretty much a steady stream of this kind of zoning text amendments so that we get the, uh, current zoning ordinances lined up with what the new comp plan?
Correct. Yeah, so I mean, there's, the future land use map, which covers the whole city, but that's, that's, that's future land use categories. That has to be translated into zoning districts.
Yes.
And then the zoning districts require zoning district standards, you know, development standards, that sort of thing. So there's, there's a lot of moving pieces with that, and that's why it's, it would take long, I mean, much longer than nine months.
Not anything I'm worried about. I'm not worried about any particular deadline. I was just curious what, how that was going to shake out from a general timeline.
Donovan, will the city make hard copies available for the planning commission? And if not, could we get one and what would that cost? I mean, I like, I like having a, rather than looking at on the, on my computer at home, I'd like to have a hard copy. Of the copy of the plan you're asking, Mike?
Right.
Of the whole plan or just the?
The whole plan?
Yeah. Yes, we can provide those for you.
You can take it out of our pay if you want.
No, I mean, I, I, that's, that's an important document.
I think it makes sense. No, you know.
I mean, it does have to be, you know, it's in a draft form yet, but once it's adopted, I, I'd like to have a, you know, I'd like to, I'd like to have it.
Bailey knows how I love the arts and crafts projects, so I'm getting a little spiral comb binding, you know, and clear covers.
Absolutely.
I was given one of those when I, when I first became a planning commission member. I still have it, but it's out of date now.
If we don't give you a gold watch, we'll give you a, you know. Paper copy for your service.
Anything else?
Important tool.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed. Extension. Motion carries. Thank you all for your contribution this evening.